Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 18th session of the Bellingham City Council. I have a few announcements. On Monday, June 1st, there will be a Transportation Benefit District Board meeting here at 12:00 PM in the council chambers. On Monday, June 1st, there will be a public hearing on the draft 2016-2021 Transportation Improvement Program, famously known as the TIP, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. The city council will hold its annual retreat on Monday, June 8th, 6:00 to 9:00 PM in the IT fireplace room in the basement of the municipal court building. That's at the Halleck Street entrance. Will Brian Heinrich lead us in the flag salute?
Lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Gene Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Liliquis.
Oh, he's probably on his way.
Okay. Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go out on a 15-minute public comment period. I don't have the sheet in front of me, so somebody bring it forward and...
Hi, I'm Judy Collins. I live at 210 Horton Road, and I still need water. I've got...all my neighbors have water lines going right down in front of me, city water, and I don't have any. And I would like to get some water if it's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarence Holmes. Hopefully I pronounced that right.
Good evening. My name is Clarence Holmes, and all of us here are caregivers at St. Joseph Hospital. On Wednesday, we collectively stood up for patient care in our community. Thank you to each of you who came out to our picket line, wrote a letter to us, called the CEO, or otherwise took action to support our strike. Our strike was a resounding success. There were 900 nursing assistants, lab techs and assistants, respiratory therapists, dietary, housekeeping, and other staff that went on strike to call on Peace Health to invest some of its $50 million in profit into patient care. We had a powerful action where our community saw that we are standing up for everyone against Peace Health's misplaced priorities. After our strike, we were locked out from taking care of our families, our friends, and our neighbors for two days. We believed the lockout was illegal. Regardless, it showed Peace Health would rather give its money to out-of-town strangers than allow us to return to the bedside. They could have spent that money on patient care, but they didn't. Our community saw how Peace Health treated us and our call for better care. This has created an even stronger groundswell of support for our campaign. Many of you received calls from your constituents requesting that you show your support for working families on Friday. This is the biggest issue in our lives right now, and we believe the biggest issue in our community. The consequences of this struggle will impact Wachem families and our local economy for years to come. We are asking you all to be leaders in holding the largest employer accountable and to ensure that the caregivers who are there for each of us have a livable wage and access to medical care. Some of you may have worked with Peace Health Administration in the past. It might not be easy to tell them that they should do better. This fight has not been easy for any of us. Doing the right thing won't be easy. Please contact Peace Health and remind them of their mission. Their mission is to treat every human with respect and dignity, to serve the community, and to promote social justice. Peace Health must live up to its mission. Last year, Peace Health made $50 million in profit. In the last 18 months, our bargaining team has been asking administration to reinvest those Bellingham dollars back into our community. Peace Health is the largest employer, and each person will use the services we provide at some point in their life. And for that reason alone, it's imperative that we demand Peace Health reinvest in our future. Undeniably, the retention and recruitment of good employees is essential for maintaining the exceptional quality of care that our families, friends, and neighbors deserves. As our elected officials, please take action with us. Our community deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Clayton Petrie.
Hello, my name is Clayton Petrie. I live in Bellingham. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, Mayor and City Council. I wanted to give you a short update on what the county is working on for their comprehensive plan update. It's something that I don't think Bellingham has completed or done, and something I think is of the utmost importance when sizing your urban growth area. Under RCW 36780702, it's a very specific little part, you're required to have a housing element ensuring the vitality and character of established residential neighborhoods that includes an inventory and analysis of existing and projected housing needs that identifies the number of housing units necessary to manage projected growth, and also some other things, but identifies sufficient land for housing, including but not limited to government-assisted housing, housing for low-income families, manufactured housing, multifamily housing, group homes, and foster care facilities, and makes adequate provisions for the existing needs and the projected needs of all economic segments of the community. So the county hired Tom Beckwith with Beckwith Consulting. He did the chat stuff, I'm sure all of you are familiar with. And one of the things that he mentioned during his presentation last Thursday to the County Planning Commission is that he doesn't think Wachem County is planning for an adequate amount of population growth under the multi-jurisdictional resolution. He thinks it should be higher, and that we'll run into some housing problems if we don't. And also, to satisfy the RCW, I read to you, you guys really need an inventory and analysis of your existing housing needs, things like how many houses to bring your vacancy level to where it should be. You know, it's been at half a percent, 1% for a long time, and it's unhealthy. How many affordable housing units do you need if nobody moved to Bellingham for 20 years? If nobody moved here at all, you need thousands, according to your own consolidated plan. Keep in mind that the chat results said that countywide, we need 11,000 affordable housing units by 2022. How many do you need 2022 through 2036? A lot, but we don't have that number. And how many specifically does Bellingham need to make happen? There's a countywide planning policy called G2, and I think it's been kind of ignored over time, but it says the county and the city shall plan for a range of housing types and costs commensurate with their affordable housing needs. The "shall" is a really strong word in a countywide planning policy, means you have to do it, as opposed to "should," where you can sometimes ignore it. So soon, you'll get a proposal from the Planning Commission with a recommendation, and I don't see anywhere where this specific work called out in this specific RCW has been done. And, you know, I really think that it's important to have that when you size your UGA, because it's in addition to just the population growth. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Liliquis, you want to tell us why you're five minutes late?
Road construction.
Okay, thank you very much. And after the 26th of this month, we're all going to have to leave a little bit early, so...okay, is there anybody else here wishing to speak to council? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and go to our first and only presentation. It's a PSE check presentation to the Bellingham School District.
Good evening, council. My name is Lynn Murphy with Puget Sound Energy. I'm the Community Services Manager here in Wachem in Skagit County. We...my team, my colleagues, including Pinky Vargas, are here today to present the Bellingham School District with a very large check for their continued work in energy efficiency. We'd also like to thank the city as well for their continued efforts in continued energy efficiency. I'm going to turn the mic over to my colleague, Peter Lilisvi, who is our Energy Efficiencies Engineer, and he's going to describe a little bit more about what city...excuse me, the school board has done.
Hello, everybody. My name is Peter Lilisvi. I'm an energy management engineer for PSE based in Bellingham. The city...or, excuse me, the Bellingham School District applied for fundings through the OSPI funding pool last year, and we worked with them to do a number of projects, about 10 actually. And the ones that I was responsible for working with Mike Anderson here of the school district on were eight school buildings that received lighting upgrades. And cumulatively, they saved over half a million kilowatt-hours a year, which is about the equivalent of 43 or 44 houses' yearly annual electrical consumption. So we just wanted to take the opportunity to, you know, thank them for participating in our programs, also to tie it into the Georgetown Prize, which Bellingham, as you know, is applying for or is trying to win, is competing with other communities to win. So, I don't know if Mike had anything to say, or how great the program is?
The program is great. Pinky's running a great ship.
I'm just going to add, I'm going to wear both hats tonight, which I don't usually get to do, but I just want to say how wonderful this is, that the school district is doing this, because the Georgetown University Energy Prize is about reduction in the schools, in the municipal buildings, and the residents. So without that participation of the schools and really looking at what's going on there with the energy use, there's no way we would succeed. So this is a huge step forward, so thank you for that work.
Sure, go ahead, Roxanne.
One thing I also wanted to add about the positivity of this is I think it's setting such a clear path for our students as they watch the school district support the environment. So we're creating future generations of environmentalists, so thank you.
So with that, we're going to do a quick photo opportunity, if that's all right with you. We have the very large check behind us here in the amount of $70,871.54. I do want to add that this really is just a half of what the school district has done. They are continuing to do more, and we hope, actually, in the next couple of months, to do another presentation similar to this to their school board with, if not the same amount, very close to the same amount of money. So they're doing a lot of work.
And you can come right around here. Stand in front of me, one, two.
In my hand.
Photobomb me, yeah. Actually, I'm going to get...I'm going to get out of the way. Okay, we will now go right on to our first committee of the afternoon, or this morning, excuse me, not in the afternoon. 9:00 AM precisely. Public Works, Public Safety, Terry Bornerman's the chair.
Thank you, Gene. We had two items before our committee this morning. The first was a bid award for scum concentrator replacement at the Post Point wastewater treatment plant, bid number 17B 2015. The overall project will consist of the purchase and installation of a new scum concentrator, thickened scum pump, and related items. This work includes the demolition and removal of the existing scum concentrator equipment, piping, and aperturance. 103 solicitations were viewed and two bids were received. The lowest responsive and responsible bid was $697,310.50, including Washington State's sales tax. By award construction of Ferndale, Washington...yeah. Bid was by award construction of Ferndale, Washington. The engineer's estimates was $700,000. The committee recommended approval, and I so moved.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Right. The second item was the Community Paramedic Pilot Program Evaluation. The fire department is conducting a nine-month pilot program to provide community paramedic service beginning October 1st, 2014, and extending to June 30th, 2015. The pilot program aims to demonstrate a sustainable model for reducing the cost of EMS resources and providing appropriate long-term patient outcomes through the scope of practice, flexibility, and coordination with other community resources, public safety, and partnering health providers. Data had been collected and analyzed to measure the impact of the program in the community and was presented to the council. This was for information only, but it was a really interesting presentation. They're six months into it, but we had three months of data, basically, that they're analyzing. And they're showing a lot of reduction in the amount of calls that are happening over...they look at a couple of months prior and a couple of months after, and look at how many calls certain people were making through EMS beforehand, and then measuring the reduction of it. Just one, aside from the public health benefits, because it's helping people link up, they help people link up with services in the community, there's all kinds of benefits from that. But during this period, they estimate there were 50 fewer visits to the ER during this period, you know, through the work of one paramedic during that three-month period. At $15,000 a trip, we're looking at $75,000 savings to the program and the cost of the ER and all the other benefits from it, just for that short of time. So the results so far look really promising, and they're coupling with WAHA and others, so the money that we helped put forward for WAHA for their case managers are helping reduce the amount of ER trips, and it's working like it's supposed to be working. And I'm just really excited by it. And I'm really looking forward to seeing it, and I'm looking forward to, and I think the mayor is too, about recommending, when this goes through, of this being part of the overall EMS program, not just in the city, but in the county as part of that program, because it's looking really good right now. So I recommend, you know, looking at it on TV 10. End of committee report.
Okay. We will now go to the Planning Committee. Jack Weiss is the chair.
Thank you, Gene. This afternoon, we had one item. It was an update on the Rental Registration and Safety Inspection Program implementation. Planning Director Rick Sepler gave a report informing us of how things have gone to date as far as the rental program is concerned, in giving us some benchmarks that have already been achieved. And then went into a description of what's up next as far as the inspection component of it. He informed us that there was one and a half full-time people that would be involved in doing inspections, one inspector and then an office assistant, to help do approximately 2,700 inspections per year that we're expecting to do. He discussed a budget that was laid out that we went and looked at, and one of the items in there was a displaced tenant fund that had to do with helping tenants that might inadvertently be evicted from their place because the unit was not meeting health and safety code issues, that we would have a special fund established to go and assist those people. We discussed what the private inspector...people have a choice of either getting a city inspector to inspect their unit or getting a private inspector that they would contract out on their own. However, in doing that type of program, there's also cost to the city to make sure that those inspections are done correctly and that we, you know, we kind of monitor that in a good way. Rick had done the numbers and came out to approximately $41 per unit for the base cost of the inspection program. A city-run inspection would cost $97, $98 per unit. The final amount of how much these inspections would cost will be known in approximately three months in a final basis, final way, and then will be brought back to the council for approval. Those numbers, I said earlier, were just estimates at this point. And finally, we spent a bit of time talking about an enforcement strategy, because neighborhoods and other interested people were interested in exactly how this program would be enforced. And Rick provided sheets in our packet that talked about different scenarios of how the planning department would go through with enforcement, whether it's an illegal unit or if it's a converted garage, or, you know, other types of examples like that. There will be, coming back to the city council, a recommendation for a prioritization of what those enforcement strategies might look like, and we'll have an opportunity to vote on that soon. This item was for information, and a committee.
Thank you, Jack. We will now go to Lake Wachem Reservoir and Natural Resources. Dan Hamel's the chair.
Thank you, Gene. We had three items before us today. The first was an inter-local agreement between the city of Bellingham and Wachem County to finance the 2015 Aquatic Invasive Species Boat Inspection Program. There was a mixed recommendation to delay passage due to questions around the county's obligation to the program, and also some questions around the long-term sustainability of the program. I'm going to turn it back over to Gene.
Okay. You heard it, mixed recommendation. What's the wishes of the council? Jack?
I would move that we would postpone the inter-local agreement adoption with Wachem County until, as Dan was talking about, that the county specifically is already approved $70,000, but apparently there is a need for at least $100,000 from the county. We don't know that yet, so we would postpone this action on our end until the county has a full amount that they would then present back to us for our adoption. Concurrent with that, I would also like to put in the motion that we would understand what the mechanics, what the actual process is going to be for us to have a sustainable program that is paid for by the users of the program for invasive species, and that we would have an opportunity to not only look at that, get the presentation, but also to come to an agreement with that approach and have that, I guess, reconcile with our previous council directives of having a fully sustainable program, fully self-supporting program. So that's my motion.
There's a second? Motion been made? No, it's been seconded twice, okay. I think Terry was first. Linda? Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Michael?
Thanks. So to clarify, you want to put off at least until the county does their budget amendment, but then the second thing is you wanted to have this discussion on when and how the program can become self-sustaining, full cost recovery? And so would that take the form of basically a work session where the administration might lay out plausible kind of phasing scenarios on the fees? And is that what you're thinking about?
Yeah, specifically a timeline and what...you know, if it's a phased-in approach, what those phases might look like, but with the ultimate goal of having it self-supporting, and to understand what the, you know, what those phases would look like and how quickly those phases can be accomplished.
Thank you.
I'm just going to repeat what I said earlier today. I think it is prudent for us to look at how we're spending this money and look at how this program could be sustainable, but I don't think it warrants the delay of the inter-local agreement, so I'm still going to advise that we proceed with the inter-local agreement.
Anybody else? Well, I'll just say that, you know, we're spending the money anyway, and what I recall is that we decided to do this, and as far as cost recovery, I thought it was the first maybe couple of years, then we take a look at it. I don't know, we didn't really specifically say when it was going to be cost-neutral, but the fact that we're spending the money anyway, I don't have a problem with having staff come back and reporting on the separate issue of when we will be, maybe someday. You know, there's several things that we've never gotten to. Look at your favorite transformation, transportation impact fees. Do they...does that pay for everything? No. It probably never will. When I got on council, it was only paying 3% or 4%. I don't know what the percentage is now, but that's just an example of how long this thing could take. So I don't have a problem with listening to that, but I just don't think we should hold this up for that. That's just how I feel, so...okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. All opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? Motion carries four to three. Next item there, Dan?
Also, an inter-local agreement, this one pursuant to the Lake Wachem Water and Sewer District to finance the same program. There was also a mixed recommendation based on the same issues.
Okay, I'll open it up, I'll open up this one too. Go ahead, Jack.
So I'd make a similar motion that we would postpone the approval of the inter-local with Lake Wachem Water and Sewer District until we've had a work session and have had the opportunity to discuss a staff presentation about the self-supporting nature of the Aquatic Invasive Species program.
Okay, a second. Any motion been made and seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye. All opposed? Aye, nay?
No.
Motion carries four to three. Same vote as the first one. Okay, next item?
The third and final item was the Lake Wachem Report on the build-out for 2015. There's three items, acquisition program and land use, forestry practices, and then setting agenda items for upcoming meetings for the rest of the year. As relates to the acquisition program, staff presented a brief overview of recent acquisition program activity. In 2015, a large property near Galbraith Mountain is being targeted for possible acquisition. In 2016, additional properties totaling between 40 and 60 acres are possible. In 2017, the acres to be acquired may go up, given that the acquisition fund will have more dollars available for land purchases. Staff also presented a summary of the Lake Wachem Watershed Annual Build-Out Analysis Report, in which they highlighted commercial forestry lands are excluded from the developable lot tally, as are public lands and facilities such as roads. Lots held by the Sutton Valley Community Association are also removed. Most of the potential developable properties in the city and its urban growth area are 15,000 square feet or smaller. Sutton Valley, they're about 7,200 square feet, and rural Wachem County, most lots are between 20,000 square feet and five acres. As relates to forestry activities and forestry issues, staff reviewed recent forestry activities in the watershed. An inter-jurisdictional committee, or IJC, reviews forest activities on public lands in the watershed, including logging, thinning, road building, and application of herbicides. And I do want to clarify that the application of herbicides is very specific. It's not flying over, you know, the whole area. This is backpack to, like a stump, to prevent further growth. In 2014, no new sales were authorized on DNR lands, although some logging continued from prior sales. 2014 activities included thinning and the application, again, of herbicides in the Olson Creek area. While Lake Wachem reconvenanced, transferred some lands from DNR to the county and thus removed them from large-scale commercial forestry uses, there are still substantial numbers of acres in the northwest and southwest portions of the watershed that are under DNR control and that could be logged in the future. Some of the agenda items for the upcoming meetings for the rest of the year, just highlight a few of these, annual review of residential retrofit program, review of tributary monitoring data and watershed modeling, and presentation on management options for city of Bellingham's NUCS Act diversion. Councilmember Vargas also requested a more thorough and robust examination of the 2015 communications plan for the Lake Wachem management program, and staff then asked us to participate in that process to provide some perspective. Councilmember Vargas also today reminded me that we did review and discuss public feedback from the joint council meeting, and that's the end of report and the committee.
Thank you, Dan. Also, we will hear from Dr. Robin Matthews in July. So we will now go to our next committee, Community Economic Development. Michael Liliquis is the chair.
Thank you, Gene. We had three items before us. This afternoon, we handled them out of order, but I'm going to go ahead and report... This afternoon, we handled them out of order, but I'm going to go ahead and report them in order. The first item is a low-income housing impact fee exemption. The state legislature, back in 2012, and by the way, with the City of Bellingham City Council's support, authorized municipalities to exempt qualified low-income housing from the city's own impact fees. A city can exempt up to 80% of the impact fees with no requirement to pay the exempted portion of the fees from public funds, other than the impact fee accounts. If you want to do a full waiver, however, the impact fees require the remaining percentage of the exempted fees be paid with public funds, other than the impact fee accounts. This afternoon, staff was seeking direction from the council on a recommendation to draft an ordinance that would allow us, this City of Bellingham, to exempt 80% of the impact fees for those qualified low-income housing projects that are on the city's annual action plan. This afternoon, the committee unanimously recommended that we do indeed provide that direction to the city staff to write up an ordinance along these lines, and I so move.
Second?
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
The second item is a review of the Community and Economic Development Division's 2015 work plans. So, the Department of Planning and Community Development now has a division specifically devoted to community economic development. It has six full-time equivalent positions in there. This afternoon, the presentation of the Division Lead, Tara Sundine, broke the work plan in that area down into three main areas. One is implementing urban villages. The other is our affordable housing and social services programs, and then also in general economic development. It was a rather thorough presentation. There are, you know, half a dozen programs or efforts in each of those areas. I certainly will not cover them all. I'll just mention, for urban villages, there's discussion about place-making redevelopment of State Street to make that one of our livelier downtown corridors. Talk about helping the Downtown Bellingham Partnership qualify some Main Street program, which enables them to get state BNO tax credits for support. And then also the incentives or opportunity zone discussion, which will be the next item on the agenda. For affordable housing, there was some discussion about numerous programs that we're involved in, including mentioning the fact that, for a city of our size, our housing dollars are much larger than the most communities, because in addition to federal monies that come to us through grants, we have our own voter-approved Bellingham Housing Levy, which makes our expenditures in this area around $5 million. It's only been in place for a little over a year, but it's already starting to show enormous benefits. And in economic development, I'm not even sure what to pick out here. I don't know what to pick out down here. I recommend that people just go online and watch the rest of the presentation. But again, there's, I think, Ms. Sundine covered at least, I'm counting, seven different areas. So, that was for information only.
Okay.
And the final item was the conclusion of a discussion of incentives for urban villages and affordable housing. The previous May 4 work session on proposed urban village incentives included with item number five of the discussion agenda. Today's work session will be covered, so we only got to five previously. Today's work session covered the remaining discussion agenda, after which the staff was going to request that further questions or changes to recommendations outlined in the urban village matrix. That's, discussions and changes actually didn't happen, and instead, there was a motion to move forward the entirety of the recommendations unaltered, and there was a mixed vote on that. So, I bring that forward with a mixed recommendation from the committee this afternoon.
Okay. Council's wishes? Go ahead.
I'd like to move that we ask the staff to proceed with a draft ordinance to include the urban village matrix as advised.
Second?
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Michael?
I don't think we finished discussing these incentives. As someone who's actually been working and pushing for and advocating for these incentives for a long time, I was actually very excited to have them come forward. And I think it's very important that we get this done right, and I think we're pretty close. But I was dismayed that there was a rush to, you know, get these out of committee and approve tonight before, I think, all the discussions had been dealt with. For example, I was hoping to discuss what the estimated expenditures might be. If we're giving these incentives, what have we spent in previous years on incentives, and what have we achieved as a result of that? That's useful, and I would like to have done the same thing with regard to these incentives. I don't mean absolute numbers. I'm just saying, we never even had a cost-benefit analysis discussion of these incentives. I would be really happy to approve these incentives, but I don't think we followed a good process this afternoon, and I don't want to support passing them right now in what I think is an incomplete form with unanswered questions, specific questions, as well as larger questions.
Roxanne?
What I'll say is that this isn't the first time we've seen these documents, these ideas, and this isn't just our first glance at any of it. We have seen these ideas when they were just simple submissions for feedback. We then got more meat on the bones. Now, we have the whole animal. And so, I think if you have read the whole thing of everything that has been submitted to us, we can create action for this, and that's what I'd like to do.
Jack?
Thank you, Gene. I wasn't even ready to talk.
I'm just going on, I'm just going on history, my friend.
Okay. Well, history would say that I would have some comments about this, and I'm kind of surprised. I don't understand why you wouldn't even allow for discussion at a work session this afternoon, I mean, process-wise. I do have some additional follow-up questions for our staff. I, you know, like Michael, I'm very supportive of doing these things. I just want to make sure that, you know, the devil in the details is brought out to the point that we understand what they really are and that we're in total agreement with them. You know, we had a discussion one meeting ago, and we found considerable things to talk about that, you know, and we ended up talking about it so much so that we ended up having to go and post, you know, to have yet another work session for today. But we hadn't, we didn't even have an opportunity to finish that discussion. So, we're going to do it in an open session tonight, because now it's a council vote, and I would like to have a little bit of time to ask some questions.
That's up to the full council. We have a motion and a second, so.
Oh, that's true. We could just simply vote.
I'm just saying, that's the way it goes. So, I'll open it up for further discussion. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead.
I have questions.
How many?
Probably three or four.
Well, let me defend the two that made the motion. When you sit on a committee, and if there's two committee members out of three that are satisfied with what they're doing, and I don't see how you can rail against the process when it's a committee meeting, and two out of the three are comfortable with what they've read and what's been presented to them. So, I'm just saying from past experience. If you're perfectly happy with what you see, you move forward. I mean, that's the only way I see it. Pinky?
Just quick comment on that. I apologize if I may have called that motion early. The reason that I did so was your indication, Michael, that you wanted to put separate motions for all different proposals forward, and at which time, I reacted to the fact that I felt adequately comfortable with everything that had been proposed and the reading I had done and the discussions that we had had. So, this is why I proposed at that time, because I was trying to divert it from turning into an eight-part process and keeping it at what the staff had recommended, and keep the package together and move forward. And if I recall correctly, staff had asked us already if they, and were, if they could have some direction on moving forward, and they are already prepared to start the work. And so, I was encouraging them to be able to do so instead of postponing it more and more. So, that's what my thoughts were.
Terry?
Yeah, I, you know, there's nothing new here that I don't really understand, and I'm prepared to vote and stuff, but at the same time, if Jack has some questions, I feel, since we've got a motion on the floor, and he's got questions relevant to the motion and to this, that he should be allowed to, he should be allowed to ask those questions, but, you know, I'm prepared to.
That's fine. We've ruined Tara's night. She's already here anyway, so come on up here.
Tara came tonight.
I know that.
Prepared to answer some questions, so.
She was here this afternoon. She knew what was going on. Go ahead, Mr. Wyeth.
Thank you. I guess, just going through the order, I mean, we didn't talk at all at last meeting or nor today about the park impact fee issues. And I guess it's more of a comment than anything else, is that we were told, we were told that park impact fees would be dealt with in the comp plan next year, and that, you know, that there would be a recommendation developed at that point. But I have to ask, you know, if the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Plan, the Pro Plan, that the Parks Department put together was done many years ago and was in the process of being updated to be included into the comp plan update for next year, if that would happen many years ago, I would perfectly support this. But the Pro Plan was adopted by us last year, and I think that all of that information is extremely current, and the implications of that, of the Pro Plan that we adopted last year are there, and that we should be able to have a recommendation about what the park impact fee contribution to the incentive package should be a lot sooner than waiting for the comp plan update over a year from now. To me, it seems like it should happen, I mean, we're doing all of this work on all of these other things, and we have a completely other department that's working on this one issue. To me, it seems like they should step up and provide us with the information, along with what the planning department is doing with all of these other issues. So, I mean, it's just a comment.
Go ahead.
I might be able to respond and help flesh out that issue. As council might recall, we are doing a facilities plan that's looking at our immediate assets and future needs, and as part of that sequence, there'll be a transition to a broader look at our level of service. Level of service is the key determinant of the park impact fee. That will be sooner rather than later. We hope to start that work in the coming month, actually, initial, and get back to inform our discussions. So, we need to do it because of the capital facilities element, but we see it being a key determinant, and we saw the process to develop these materials for you sort of parallel with that conversation moving forward. So, they will inform each other. We will be looking at those issues. It will be something, when you consider this in draft form, we'll have, hopefully, some guidance we can bring back to you on how that level of service issue is going and what the effect would be.
I guess, a clarifying question, though, is that wasn't, didn't the Pro Plan already have a capital asset section in it that listed out all of the different assets that the Parks Department is, you know, currently has and is maintaining, and that we would already know what that, what that number is, and therefore, be able to determine what the level of service aspects are? Or are you talking about a policy decision where we're going to end up changing what is already known in the Pro Plan as a mechanism for working out the comp plan update for next year?
I would suggest that it's likely will be revisions to level of service in the comprehensive plan and its capital facilities element, and that will be a policy decision before this body, after a recommendation from both committee and from the planning commission on some aspects of it. And I think that we felt as staff this information was needed sooner rather than later to inform a number of ongoing processes. So, indeed, this is a matter that will return before council and will inform the incentive program.
Okay. Okay. Another question I had was, this has to do with the table that's on page 60 of our packet. I had a couple, couple of issues with this. Is there any reason why, with the LIFT program itself, the local infrastructure financing tool program, why it couldn't be associated with the boundaries of the LIFT program itself, you know, which includes Old Town and Downtown, or parts of Old Town and Downtown? Do we necessarily have to limit it to the waterfront itself?
Actually, in the more thorough write-up, it does explain that LIFT applies to all of the waterfront district, all of Old Town, and parts of Downtown. So, we are not changing that. We actually can't change that here. So, this matrix could be updated to clarify that it does apply to Old Town and parts of Downtown.
Okay.
So, we can make that change.
I would encourage you to do that. That would be a nice addition to it.
That's a good catch. Thank you.
Another, is more of a comment than as part of this overall thing. It would be nice to be able to do a full-on review of the transportation impact fee program and to see what's working and what isn't, and what could be, what could be modified, because I think that the first few years of its implementation, we've learned things, and it would be nice to have that work done in conjunction with whatever types of reductions that we provide as incentives throughout this program. Because to me, it seems like, when we first adopted it, it was, it was kind of presented to us, and we, it didn't seem like we had a very good opportunity to really understand it well enough to, and we were just told, you know, let's work, let's do it, let's do a 1.0 version of it, and then come back later and change it around. To me, it seems like a few years is coming on, and we have this opportunity to do that The other, the other basic comment that I had had to do with the density bonus provisions that we have for some of the, well, for the waterfront, for Old Town, and for Samish Is there, I know that you've looked at it, Tara, because you've been really responsible as an author for a lot of this, as much as Darby is too, but do you see that there is a need for a review of that program as well to see, do we want to provide more of a standardized density bonus? Do we need to modify those density bonuses so that they're actually, you know, actually used in a way that would accomplish our goals?
Good question. I think the density bonus system does need to be monitored and modified on a fairly regular basis, because it is tied to land values, and it's tied to the specific circumstance in what you're working. So, there is, I'd say that there shouldn't be an across-the-board application to density bonuses, because land values very much vary from, say, Samish Way to Downtown or to Fairhaven. So, they're tied to that. They're also tied to how much density you're providing. And some of the, like, Old Town, for example, we established that density, that was the first one, and we established that bonus system prior to the recession, when land values were kind of inflated. So, they probably should be reviewed. We aren't doing that under this situation, but, or under this project, but we should be taking a look at that.
Okay. Again, I would encourage that. That's great. My final comment has to do with the dense, the, both the density bonus provision and the expedited permitting provision that is provided for Barclay. And wanting to understand why we want to go give those incentives to that area of town, given the fact that we would, I mean, to me, it would be better for them to come in with a new master plan, an updated master plan, and at the, you know, at the approval process, to be able to then provide them with the same type of benefits that the other urban villages have. But given the fact that they have a substantial amount of residential development that is lacking in their urban village area, I don't understand why we would be giving them expedited permitting. I don't understand why we'd be giving them density bonus provisions at a time when they haven't even met their basic requirements.
So, as far as the density bonuses go, that recommendation comes with an update to the Barclay Village. So, if they were to pursue, or if we were to pursue, an update to a plan, that's when we would take a look at providing density bonuses. So, we're not recommending that at this moment in time.
Okay. So, there's an asterisk on that one.
Yeah. As far as expedited permitting, though, we are recommending that. The staff views the development of Barclay Village as, that property owner and that entity is marching along in the, in the direction of urban village like hardly any other one of our urban villages. So, it's heading in a direction that much more than, let's say, Samish Way is. So, it's heading in a direction that much more than, let's say, Samish Way is. So, we definitely view what they're doing as, without being required, as heading in the right direction. So, we definitely would be recommending expedited review if we were applying that to the other urban villages.
Okay. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. Nope, Jack was the only one who was going to answer questions. Go ahead.
All right. I'm just wondering, has the staff done any analysis of the amount of foregone tax revenue or waivers that we've given in the various areas in the past or estimated which of these incentives over, you know, for the one area, we had, you set a million dollar cap over five years and the annual cap. So, that was pretty easy estimate. It's a cool one million at the most in terms of incentives if people take advantage of that early opportunity. But what about in the other areas? Are there any estimates of the yield we might get for what kind of tax incentives or, or other kind of waivers?
So, I did not bring with me this evening. We have received information from the, from the assessor, what the, the impact has been to property taxes associated with the multifamily tax exemption program. I can provide that to you. I think we have provided that to you, but I can do that again. I just, I didn't bring it with me this evening. What we decided to do with regards to the SDCs and the permit fees is establish a cap for what, what the city, what, what we felt like was reasonable for us to provide and put a cap on an annual basis. And then the BNO tax, we did ask Brian Henshaw to take a look at it. It's just really hard for, for us to estimate because all the businesses vary so much on, so we had a hard time coming up with an estimate on what the BNO tax impact would be.
Unless we knew what the development is.
Right. Unless we knew what the, well, the development, actually, unless we really knew what the, how it was motivating businesses to, to move to those districts.
We, we can, of course, when we return, correlate the number of new units to the incentives provided in time of that. And that would help a little bit to, to talk about the causality. Because I, I hear your issue is, in the past, have we done these things and seen the results? And the key is, what kind of metrics do we have? The corus is, when we provide the benefit, we see an increase of units compared to what the prior trends were. We could show that and bring those materials back.
Right. I think we might have the best data on the multifamily tax exemption, which is tied to units or for that matter with the impact fee waivers for like Walton Place, for example, definite number of units for the waiver. But some of these others where we're trying to promote commercial development or mixed-use development, it isn't tied to unit counts. Harder to come up with, as you say, the metrics, but then it's also harder to determine the value, the utility of the program.
If I might, I will say that there's a range of options provided. These options have been used successfully in other communities where we looked and assessed at least first cut and which ones would be most applicable to this market and, and the unique circumstances we, we have in Bellingham. And that's what's brought forward in the recommendation. We would acknowledge the need to be agile and that it's likely we'll need to do fine-tuning after we adopt these because some will be successful, perhaps too successful, and we have to lessen their sweetness, and others will be dormant. So, it is not a precise science. It's our best educated guess based on other experience, but we will monitor and adjust.
Okay. Okay. Question has been called. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to two with Councilmember Lillicust and Hamill dissenting. Okay, we will now go to the committee as a whole. Thank you, Tara. And Rick, you've got 10 minutes to get home and watch Dancing with the Stars. Hurry up and get going.
And that concludes committee report.
Thank you, sir. Committee as a whole, we had three items, four items. We had an update on the mission activities of the Northwest Use Services. Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. This, this, this morning, this afternoon, there were actually two motions that you made, Pinky. One had to do with, with the urban village ones and the other one had to do with, with...
They do. I restate, I restated my motion today to hopefully include both of those because I wasn't, because I thought in my statement it included all the entire package, but it did not. But that was my intention. So, I revised the motion to say proceed the draft ordinance to include the urban village matrix as suggested by the staff, which was the package that was in front of us. And hopefully that is inclusive of that statement.
Are you clear, Tara?
But there's a, but there's a citywide package in there, too.
Yeah, we never discussed.
And that wasn't included, was it? Because that wasn't part of it.
We aren't talking about that yet.
Go ahead.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Go ahead.
So, my understanding is the matrix for the urban village incentives as amended in the discussion agenda. We will bring back to you the rest of the incentives.
That's...
Okay, you presented it to us in the packet, but we didn't, we didn't actually talk about it.
We did not actually get to that part.
Got it. Okay. So, a future meeting. Okay.
Next year.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now go to the committee as a whole, again, an update on the mission activities of Northwest Use Services. Rihanna Bardley came this afternoon and gave a nice discussion on how Northwest Use Services does impact our city. They do a fantastic job. The money we donate to them every year is, is very well spent and we're really happy to have them. The next item was a discussion of the proposed new jail facility. County Executive Jack Lowes gave a presentation and answered questions this afternoon. The county council will be looking at this again on May 26th. May or may not have a vote. We will just have to wait and see. And we will, maybe it'll be on our agenda on the first of June or maybe not. We'll see what happens on May 26th over at the county side. From what I understand, Bellingham and Ferndale are the only two jurisdictions that haven't gotten on board this yet, so. Any discussion, Terry?
Well, as part of this, we asked that staff bring back their comments on that.
Yes.
Because I'm still real disappointed that the county exec wouldn't be, wouldn't answer the question about, you know, interest rates.
Or interest.
Danston would not, you know, be straight and answer it. So, I have like staff's response to that and the other, and the other questions.
Interest income, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
As well as the, as well as to the other ones because that's important for us to evaluate.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments on the jail? Okay, we had, we approved minutes. We have any, any of their, is there any older new business? Roxanne.
Well, I'm excited to share some information about the fact that I got to go through Fire Ops 101. And this was such an incredible experience to partake in. Basically, what it is, is elected officials from throughout the state get to go to this hammer training facility that's in Richland. And you go through all of these different activities to get a snapshot, just a glimpse of what firefighters and paramedics go through on a daily basis. This was an extreme physical test because you're wearing 50 pounds of gear and it was 80 degrees outside. So, if that wasn't tough enough, I don't know what is. So, we got to put out fires in a two-story building and a car that was on fire. There was a propane tank on fire and basically you had two hoses walking toward the propane tank, one team leader in the middle. Then the team leader in the middle had to mock turning the nozzle off, but the only thing that's protecting you is a wall of water. The fire was right on the other side. So, if that's not terrifying. We also got to deal with a car accident and we had to secure the vehicles. One was on top of the other and we worked to get the victims out of the driver's seat. I'll just say, those jaws of life that they use, I pride myself in being strong, but man, are they heavy. I mean, I could lift it, but I couldn't position it, if that helps you understand how heavy that is. And also, it took us an hour to get those people, the dummies, out of the car. The firefighters and responders do this in 10 to 20 minutes. So, think about how they do that process over and over just to protect our safety. We climbed a ladder that was so high that it would make anybody's knees buckle. Two of my favorite things that we got to do is we got to go into a completely pitch black and smoky building. On one side, what we had to do was find a victim and drag them out. You can't see anything. You have to walk along the wall. You're sweeping your leg to try to find the individual because you don't want to leave the wall because you might go into the fire. It was great to find the victim and save them. And then on the other side, what you had to do is go through a maze, pitch black, smoke-filled, everywhere from walking to crawling to getting on your elbows just to get through it, but that was really cool. And then last thing we did was, it was amazing for me to learn more about emergency medical services and just how much our EMS providers can do before the patients even get to the hospital. The technology has dramatically improved. They can do small operations to really help improve everybody's lives and to protect lives. And also, it just made me really proud that we have such a healthy community in Bellingham. So, hopefully, we won't have as many people that need these services and a healthy community is what I want to continue to support. It was exciting to see electeds from everywhere and to get to meet more electeds all along the way and go through this with them. So, I'll just conclude in saying a couple of thoughts for the council about this. One of the things that I thought about in my previous background of working for Warehouser is how we need to create better safety. And one of the things we can do to protect the safety of our firefighters and protect the safety of everybody that they support is to maintain adequate staffing levels. If a team of firefighters is one person down, it can affect and compromise the safety of the firefighters, but also the lives that they need to protect and save. So, as we go forward, I just hope we'll think about that. And then also, the technology and the tools are always changing for firefighters and they're getting better and better. So, I just hope we'll consider that as we go forward to support our firefighters, again, keeping them safe and keeping the people safe that they need to help. And the last council thought is, if you haven't gone, I hope you'll please sign up because this is really a life-changing experience. So, I really want to thank the Bellingham-Watcombe County International Association of Professional Firefighters. Local 106 is who funded this and I am so grateful that I got to go through it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I better start training. I, I just wanted to let everybody know that next week, on behalf of the City of Bellingham and Puget Sound Energy, I'll be attending the Department of Energy's Better Building Summit and representing us at the Georgetown University where there'll be a national press release and all 50 cities will be presented on the dashboard. So, it's pretty exciting and I'm looking forward to representing our awesome city.
Michael?
Wow. That's cool. And yeah, two years ago, went on that same training. It's awesome. So, y'all got to do it. I'd like to report out that late last week, I went to an event hosted by the Lummi Nation called Celebrating and Protecting Our Waters, hosted by Lummi Nation and other groups, working on issues that the city council has already weighed in on, concerns about the marine traffic and the rail traffic transporting fossil fuels. There are leaders from many organizations who are advocating this from an environmental standpoint. But really, the focus of this particular discussion was the fact that there are treaty rights that have been retained by the sovereign tribes and those treaty rights have different kinds of legal standings and protections. And it's important for the people who attended this to understand not only their legal issues and, and regulatory issues with regard to environmental protection or protection of our community's safety, but there are also other rights at stake here. It was a really useful meeting and I thought I should tell you about it.
Okay.
Dan, this is more of a question than a report out. A few months ago, there was some discussion around paid and protected sick leave possibly being moved forward this year, and I just was wondering what the status of that was.
Go ahead.
There are a lot of organizations that are coming together and they wanted to do coalition building around this. And so, they're going to be meeting on the 20th and I hope I, that we can bring this forward for our discussion very soon thereafter that.
Kate?
Thank you.
This morning, Pinky and I were over at Muni Court. We did not break the law. We were over there with Shucks and Middle School students. It was Law Day and we sat through two cases that were heard in front of Deb Lev. They wanted us over there. We, they said we'd been over there for an hour or so. They only had two cases, so that's great. Usually on Monday mornings, they have a whole bunch more. But Pete Smiley led the discussion and we actually got to hear a couple of, a couple of cases in front of Deb Lev. The, the Shucks and Middle School students last, asked a lot of great questions and it was really neat to be there. Linda, you have an announcement to make sitting over there next to you, too, don't you? Yes, you do, the new Linda Lou. We won't call her that.
Yes, I'm retiring next month, as most of you know, and this is Elizabeth Oaks. She will be the new city clerk representative. She's the mini-me.
Welcome, Elizabeth.
Welcome, Elizabeth.
Hope we don't drive you too batty, but it's going to happen. Okay. Dan?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to, I actually do have a report out. I just wanted to thank Prosecutor McKeckren and Judge Urrig for taking me over to the jail courthouse and sitting with me through the bail setting hearings on a Thursday afternoon a couple of weeks ago to help me better understand how that process works. So, I just wanted to acknowledge both of those gentlemen for taking the time out of a busy day to do that.
Yeah?
I wanted to announce a, a public hearing, a public meeting by the WTA. They have been starting a process for doing their strategic plan for bus service. It's a 10-year update. They haven't done it since 2004. And they are having their first community listening session on this Wednesday on May 20th at 5:00 at the Technical College, the brand-new building in the Technical College, which is kind of like the, the center of the campus. So, that will happen at 5:00 on Wednesday. People are interested in...
Kate, any other older new business? Yes, dear.
I just hope this will help the community understand that all of your council members are doing big and awesome things.
We now have the executive session. It's a little lengthy, so bear with me. We had, the first item was potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on the potential purchase of approximately 34.43 acres, property owned by Talbot Real Estate LLC and TIC Holdings, Inc., located at east of James Street and north of Sunset Pond. The city will use the property for, number one, a flood, flood control berm; number two, the Squalicum Creek reroute project to enhance a salmon stream; and three, the Beta Baker Trail and other greenways activities. I will now entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of this property located east of James Street and north of Sunset Pond for $1.5 million.
So...
Yes, there needs to be a second. Motion been made and seconded?
Second.
Roxanne made it and Pinky seconded. Any discussion, Jack?
I'm going to be voting against this, this motion. I feel like this property is, is overpriced. It doesn't meet our, our city appraisal and I feel like our money, our money is, is very scarce and our resources need to be spent wisely. And I feel like this is overpriced and I don't, I don't support this.
Terry?
And I'm going to support it because this is a project that we, it's been out there for a long time. We've been looking at this as a possibility. It's one of the last ways across, over or under I-5, along the city's property lines. And it's, you know, it's something that's going to be really valuable to the community. Not only will it work with that, but to the environmental values in terms of being able to get the changing of Watcombe Creek and we'll put the Beta Baker Trail under there. I'm just really excited about this and it's something that we've been working towards for, I, I'm not even sure how many years, at least 10, 12 years, at least, to get to this point of, of purchasing the property. So, I'm excited.
Michael?
Well, first just a question. We discussed several acquisitions together. Is this the larger Eastern one?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure about the price. I, I'm with Jack. I, I think actually this is overpaying for a piece of property and this isn't the piece of property which goes under the highway. So, it's not part of that aspect of the project, although it is important for the, changing the course of Squalicum Creek. But I, I still think that this isn't, this isn't the right price for this property.
Kate, any further discussion?
Well, just one thing. I just, I think since we have that, that debate, since we have gotten appraisals for it, I don't want the public to think that we're paying way out of the appraisals and things, but this is a joint in-between appraisal, between a couple of appraisals, so it falls within that, that range. And so, just, I just wanted to be clear that people know that. know that.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to two with Councilman Weiss and Lillicust opposing. The second item is potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on the potential purchase of approximately 12.22 acres, property owned by Bellingham Coal Storage LLC, located west of James Street and east of I-5. The city will use the property for a flood control berm and a connector road with bicycle lanes between Birchwood and James Streets, the Squalicum Creek reroute to enhance a salmon stream, and the Beta Baker Trail and other greenways activities. I will now entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of this property located west of James Street and east of I-5 for $975,000.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded by Dan. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Gene?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Danny has a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a, sorry, that's...
Okay, go ahead.
I just had a comment. Back in January, Renee LaCroix from Department of Natural Resources took me on a tour of the, of that area. Part of that was to see the James Street Road projects back when it was not a road, and, and now it is. What was, what I, the takeaways that I had were the, that Sunset Pond and Bug Lake are not, they're not natural. They were dug out when I-5 was created in the 60s, and Squalicum Creek was then routed into both of those, I think there's actually three, about three entities watered there, if I'm not mistaken. The impacts on the fish are, are not good. I think that this rerouting of the, the creek to take it back to a more natural form is fantastic. The addition of the trail and the addition of the Orchard Drive extension there, I think would help provide better transportation options, options in terms of medical response to the hospital from that future developed area, so, so I'm supportive of the whole package.
Okay. Okay, the next item is potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on the potential purchase of approximately 1.97 acres, partial fee interest in approximately .6 acre road and trail easements on property owned by Bellingham Coal Storage LLC, west of I-5 and north of Birchwood Avenue. The city will use this property for a flood control berm and a connector road with bicycle lanes between Birchwood and James, the Squalicum Creek reroute project to enhance salmon stream, and the Beta Baker Trail and other greenways activities. I will now entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of a partial fee interest road easement and trail easement on this property located west of I-5 and north of Birchwood Avenue for $488,000.
Happily so moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, you voted no, right? Jack voted no, I'm sorry. The fourth item is litigation. New Singular Wireless versus the City of Bellingham, Watcombe County Superior Court case number 13-2-01599-1. Staff providing an update on this lawsuit involving the utility tax refund claimed by New Singular Wireless in the sum of $238,492.85. And I will now entertain a motion to authorize a settlement agreement with the following terms. The city will issue a utility tax credit in the sum of $36,687.32, and dismissal of the lawsuit in administrative appeal with prejudice.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The last item was potential litigation. Staff provided information on potential litigation matter, information only, no action was taken. Mayor's report. Oh, I'm sorry.
Was there some minutes we didn't approve?
Yes, there is. On May 4th, I'm sorry, the evening minute of, minutes of May 4th.
I would move approval of the May 4th evening minutes.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thanks, Gene.
Thank you, Michael. I wasn't paying attention. Mayor's report.
Now, my turn.
No, just...
I wanted to announce that the, there's a bill that the city has been supporting, dealing with warrant officers and the ability to use warrant officers, as we do in our city. We just hired one more. We're in the process of hiring one more. And there was a concern the governor was going to veto the bill, so the city weighed in on that, and the governor signed the bill today, and I got a picture of it, if anyone wants to see a bill signing. And this was supported by our own police department, so I was happy that it passed. Secondly, I am going, I've been invited to serve on Operation... There are two here. I'm working on Operation Strong Cities, so there's 12, 20 of us at this local level that have been invited to work with the AWSC, the Association of Washington Cities, to look at forming an agenda and advising. And one of the things I want to do is talk to, I'd be very interested in what you're, what you're interested in. One of my big interests is working with all the cities and the association to look at how we all take care of people in need in our, in our communities. And I think it's really important. I think in Bellingham, we do an excellent job. We can always do better. I'm sure there are some communities that don't do as well as we do, and so that's one of the reasons I agreed to serve on this committee, because I think that dealing with people in need is something that all cities need to do. So anyway, so I needed another committee, so now I have one. The last thing is, I'm reappointing Dean Haskins as the Alabama Hill Neighborhood Representative to MNAC, the Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Committee, and we are having a meeting Wednesday, so Jack, you're gonna have to tell me what goes on at WTA, because I'm not going to be able to come.
Thursday morning? Oh, no, Wednesday night.
Yeah, the...
Yeah, okay.
No, no, I'll be there Thursday morning.
Okay.
This was the Wednesday night, because I'd be real interested in hearing, hearing the public comment, so you and Roxanne can tell me what goes on.
Will do.
Short and sweet.
Okay, thank you. I, and I am remiss, I forgot to talk about Brian Henshaw's financial report. He kind of gave me a little glare there, and I, he reminded me that that was it. That was the top of his head, if you want to be honest about it, but, no, he did give a first quarter financial report this afternoon. It was a very good report, so far so good on the revenue side, but there are a lot of unfunded liabilities, as we've known for a long time, so we've got to work it out for us, but the first quarter is looking better than, better than expected, so that was a very vast report. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 20772, an ordinance establishing Bellingham Municipal Code, Chapter 4.92, for the purpose of establishing a 1% for art program.
Move third and final.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Gene Knutson.
Aye.
Michael Illoquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornerman.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero. Agenda Bill 20789, an ordinance amending Chapter 10.28 BMC to authorize voluntary compliance agreements with property owners where the violation does not create a risk of imminent harm to public health or safety.
Move third and final.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Michael Illoquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornerman.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Gene Knutson.
Yes.
Ordinance passes seven zero.
Stan still watches meetings. I'm doing that for Stan. He, he watches a meeting once a month.
Agenda Bill 20804, an ordinance amending the 2015-2016 adopted budget, reclassifying one full-time position budgeted in multiple funds in the Public Works Department, replacing the full-time position with two part-time positions, and reallocating expenditures in the water, street, storm, and surface water, and Olympic Pipeline Incident Funds, to provide funding for the change.
Move third and final.
Second.